I'd like to call the order of the August 16th, 2021 County Commission meeting. And thanks for all of our guests being here tonight and encourage you to come back any opportunity you can. At this time for the prayer and pledge, I'll introduce Commissioner Sarah Patton.
Mayor, Commissioners, and guests, we're tonight, we're going to have someone do the prayer that I've known all his life. He's my brother Larry Bear. He lives here in Lebanon on Roanoke Pike. He attends the Adams, you know, the Roanoke Church Christ, and he's retired from Deloitte and Touche. Knows all about those computer systems. And the young man with him is Michael, his grandson, who's a freshman at Lebanon High. Michael enjoys basketball and playing the saxophone in the band first tenor. So.
Please rise.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Father, we pray that these men and women, as they prepare to discuss things that are pertinent to their districts, to this county, we pray that they would keep the needs of their constituents in mind, that each decision they make would be for the betterment of their respective districts. Father, we especially pray that they would look to you for guidance. We pray for the men and women in Afghanistan, Father, at this time, as they are suffering. We pray that you would be with them. Be with these men and women as they carry out their duties. Be with us in all things, Father, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Ms. Patton, and thank you, men. You will please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting.
Why now?
Very good. Commissioner Ash.
I just do.
Twenty-five present. Everyone's here. Report from Steering Committee, Commissioner Patton.
Yes, the Steering Committee met in the Commission Room in regular session on Thursday, August the 5th, 2021. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received as filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Adoption of the agenda?
I move to for the adoption of the agenda. Are we going to do the, yes, move for the adoption of the agenda?
A motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Consent agenda?
A motion for the adoption of the consent agenda. I thought we were supposed to consent.
We got a speed limit to be set on John Hager, and I got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. There is no public hearing tonight. This time, I'll introduce Commissioner Justin Smith.
Good evening. Want to say thank you, as a family, for being here. Sheriff, thank you for working with me and getting in contact with the family. I know that when we lost PT, it kind of hit home. Like, it hit home for each and every one of us. For myself, working with PT in my career, but also, I got one little story. PT always stood behind me, so he'd always pick on me, and I'd pick on him, and he always was about his job, took it serious. And he kind of would get upset whenever somebody would always come up. As a habit, I opened doors, so I always get up and I'd open the door, and he'd tell me, "Justin, you gotta quit." And I said, "Why?" He said, "You want to get me fired. You're taking my job from me." So, it just reminds me of, you know, just stories of PT and his demeanor and his servant heart. So tonight, as twenty-five Commissioners, we want to honor PT. As we can see, PT, we lost our brother, but we also lost a friend. So, bear with me. Also, I want to thank Commissioner Ash. He actually helped me write this. I know that he spent a lot of time with PT, and so he was able to be a part of this as well. So, thank you, Commissioner Ash. Resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, designating Philip A. Tomlin posthumously as the Honorable Sergeant at Arms for Wilson County Commission. Whereas Philip A. Tomlin, better known to all as PT, was born in Wilson County, Tennessee, in 1942, graduating from Lebanon High School in 1960 and beginning a career with Texas Boot Company in Lebanon that led to his or him being in charge of the security of multiple locations for 36 years before retiring from Texas Boot Company. And whereas during that time, he was working as an auxiliary police officer for the City of Lebanon Police Department, and in 1982 began to work at the Wilson County Sheriff's Department as Reserve Officer, reaching the rank of Lieutenant. Whereas after his retirement from Texas Boot, he worked full-time with the Sheriff's Office for a total career that spanned there three decades, with the same volunteer spirit, taking on any assignments that the sheriff would ask or with the task. Since with and whereas, PT never considered himself too big to do little things, always taking every task with importance of completing the job. And whereas PT had a true volunteer spirit, and his warm smile was very encouraging to everyone, he met, as PT's career began to wind down, he took over the responsibilities of taking care of the Wilson County Commission, making sure that the committee meetings and the County Commission were safe and secure. And whereas in this role, you could say he effectively became the Sergeant at Arms, always with the support of the sheriffs that he worked for. And whereas PT was blessed with two wonderful sons, Greg and Jeff, and a sister Shirley, with his passing, he also left many family members and friends with a deep loss. And whereas Wilson County, Tennessee, is a much better place because God allowed him to serve his community as a loyal public servant. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we honor Officer Philip Tomlin as the official Sergeant at Arms for Wilson County, Tennessee.
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sheriff, would you say, would you like to say anything?
I echo what Justin said. Sheriff Ash spent a lot of time with PT, and we probably don't need to talk about some of them stories, do we? I don't. But we had a good time. We're going to miss him, and I, as I told his two sons during all the funeral, thank y'all for sharing your deity with us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that framed copy that be put outside the courthouse walls here, at least for a period of time of mourning.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Thank y'all for being here.
My husband Willie got his one and only police car right in the back of the police car from PT. They used to meet each other all the time when they were eating lunch on Wednesdays, and a lot of times it was at Wits', sometimes it was at Zaxby's or wherever, but he'd meet and Cory, and PT would be there, you know? And one time, they were at Zaxby's, and so Willie came home that day, and he said, "Well, I was in the backseat of the police, rode in the backseat of the police car today." And I said, "What in the world did you possibly do?" He said, "It was pouring down rain, and PT didn't want me to walk in the rain." So, he took him from Zaxby's to Lowe's, and of course, everybody in Lowe's was like, "Why is Willie in the police car?" So, but he, PT was such a great guy. We all miss him tremendously. Guys, y'all want to start coming forward? And thank whoever put the newspaper on my desk. John's collecting, he's got to three or four of them so far. Anybody who hadn't seen them. Some of you may know some of these individuals. They've been around here for a while. I know you all know John. Ms. Laura Beth's been here for, in Lebanon, for quite a while. Mr. Farmer, Mr. Benzinger, y'all want to come up, too? You can, you're welcome to. Some board members. Come ahead, Ms. Stevens, you want to come up? Somebody can get on this side if you want to. So, we have some board members here, and then we have coaches, and then we have athletes, Special Olympics athletes. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring our participants in the Tennessee Special Olympics Regional Bocce Ball Tournament. Whereas on July the 24th, 2021, the Tennessee Special Olympics Regional Bocce Tournament was hosted in Lebanon, Tennessee, at the Fox Park Annex Field, with participants from many counties of Tennessee in attendance. Whereas Area 27 consists of Wilson and Trousedale Counties, had athletes participating in both the traditional and the unified teams, winning medals in many events. And whereas in traditional teams, Divisions 1 and 2, the first place, Division 1 team, was made up of Emily Burkett, Laura Beth Atwood, where's Laura? Okay, Lydia Forlet, and Whitney Lackey. Whitney's not here with us tonight. And whereas Laura Beth Atwood and Lydia Forlet placed second in the traditional doubles event, and Emily Burkett and Whitney Lackey placed third. And whereas in traditional doubles, Division 2 place winners were Tyson Whitaker and Leanne Advent. And whereas in traditional teams, Division 2, third place winners were Tyson Whitaker and his teammates. And whereas we had many medal winners in the unified divisions of 1 and 2, including in Division 1, first place winners in unified doubles, Dean Mullins and Drew Mullins, this is Drew, and second place winners in unified doubles, Tyler Faulkner and Richard Faulkner. And in Division 2, first place winners undefeated in all five of their games were Caitlin Lanham and John Greenwood, and second place winners Kayla Lanham and Dylan Lanham. And whereas in the teams event, first place winners were Caitlin Lanham, John Greenwood, Tyler Faulkner, and Richard Faulkner. And third place winners were Kayla Lanham, Dylan Lanham, Dean Mullins, and Drew Mullins. And whereas Emily Burkett and Lydia Forlet in bocce, and Laura Beth Atwood in swimming, will be representing Tennessee in the U.S. Special Olympics in Orlando, Florida. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County, by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby honor and recognize our Olympians of the Tennessee Special Olympics and congratulate them on their individual team performances. This is Dean and Drew. They're brothers, and they live out in the Mount Juliet area.
They're neighbors of mine, too.
They're what?
They're my neighbors.
Oh, they are? Well, cool.
Coached my daughter in soccer.
Yeah, I did. That was a while back, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. Congratulations.
I don't know what else to say, but thank you. We had a great time. It was all about fun, very good community. A little hot this year, but we got through with nobody dehydrating or injury, so. But this is, this means a lot to us. Thank you for having us. I really appreciate it.
And this is such a big honor for us, this every year. I really appreciate this Mary living there for us, trying to, you know, just cheer us on, and it's just amazing how well that these men and women have played this year, and it's just a great, great time to do it, if your teammates cheering them on, just being hot, you know, the shame, but we have a really fun time, and it's just really, really fun time to do that each and every year.
If I may add, the city and Area 27 did a joint venture of building the bocce courts across, kind of sort of across from Jimmy Floyd Center. They are available to the public. The state came to us and asked if they could hold the bocce tournament here. We were very receptive to that because we wanted to show it off. You can play bocce there, and I encourage all of you to do it. And if you don't have a set of balls, you can go to Jimmy Floyd and get a set, and borrow a set. But I encourage you all to use the facility. Thank you.
I also want to tell you that the boys, our men's flagged football team is going to be representing the state of Tennessee at the, I mean, Wilson County Flag Football Team is going to be representing Tennessee as well, or Wilson County, at the state.
Thank you. Okay. Report from the Minutes Committee, Commissioner Bishop.
The Minutes Committee met here at the courthouse in the Commissioners' room at 5:30 on August the 5th. All five committee members were present. After some amendments to the July amendments, they were approved to be sent to all Commissioners in the packet. I make a motion for this report to be received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Reading of the Minutes?
Move that we dispense with the reading of the Minutes.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Elections and notaries, all notaries are there.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion to approve a notary list? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and say aye. E-911 Board, you are to confirm my appointment of one member to fill Mr. Jerry Taylor's unexpired term by the Emergency Communications District. I would like to recommend Mr. Jeff Tonks, and the file was sent to you in your packet earlier. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Library Board, you are to elect one member to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term, Ms. Betty Jo Dedman. The term expires on June 30th, 2023. I'd like to recommend Ms. Von Bar to be elected at this vacancy. Motion. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover.
My report.
Emergency Management Director's, report Director Cooper.
Good evening. The dispatch report from the district, summary July attached with your packets. It's medical calls, 1325, 25, fire 57, rescue 269. That means the total of calls are 1651 calls for the month of July. This is going to be a short report tonight, that's all he has attached. Does anybody have any questions?
Motion to approve. Second. I got a motion in the second, and do have one question. Commissioner Walker.
Yes, sir. We know the number of positives for COVID this month.
I saw that in your report. County total positive of August 13th, 2021 was 20,904.
That's, I think that's to date total.
That to date total for this month?
I can send you a list.
447 active is what this is.
There you go, 447.
There's active cases.
That's active.
That's active, that's positive.
And I'll send you a breakdown tomorrow of the, every day. I have that in my office for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hobbs? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jerry, appreciate it. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich.
No report.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor, County Commissioners. Your report's in your packet. The numbers are, they're up a little bit this month. Continue to look at them jail numbers, and like I said, I'll stand up here every month and say the jail's full, so it's full. In saying that, construction projects moving right along. I think they're a little ahead of schedule, having a little bit of problem getting some materials, and that's a nationwide problem, that's not a county problem, but they're working on it. But they are moving forward, and they are ahead of schedule. Road size pickup, work buses have been pretty busy over the past month. Y'all know affairs going on, right? But we still dedicated one bus, they're still out picking up trash, and if you need something, just let us know, we'll get it handled. That concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford.
Mr. Chair, fellow Commissioners, the Education Committee met August the 5th in an upstairs conference meeting room. We did have a quorum, and the minutes are in your packet for approval.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Director of Schools, report, Director Jeff Letcher.
You have our packet, I think we amended this afternoon, added a couple of things. I got Mr. Smith here with me tonight. He'll be answering some questions, available for questions. Just on the Stoner Creek project, we did open that bid, and it was awarded to R.G. Anderson. You have a bid sheet there, and Mr. Smith can answer some questions. I know you're going to have. Board did approve that bid of R.G. Anderson being awarded that bid, and we're in communication with finalizing the contract, so we can go ahead and get started on that. And that's ongoing, and we expect to make a move just as soon as possible, so we can get that project out of the way. Mr. Smith, if you would, just share with him the bids and some of the total money, and then feel free to ask him any questions.
As Mr. Letcher said, we did open a bid on August 5th for Stoner Creek. We had one bidder, however, we did have three contractors there. We had a bid pulled off the table. All three of them are waiting for materials quotes up until about five minutes for the bid, and that's, that's the reason two of them pulled their bids. We did award that to R.G. Anderson. Now, we bid this a little, a little different. We bid this as a base bid to build back what was existing there. That bid came in at 22,877,000. However, if we build it back just like it was, that would be for 650 or so kids. We're right now at 680 to 690 there at Stoner Creek. So, that, that really wasn't going to work. So, we did put in there an additional 16 classrooms, two additional wings on each side, and so we broke those out in a separate spot on the bid, so we knew the price per square foot. They came in at $140 and $143 a square foot for each of those two wings, which is very cheap square footage in this market. So, we did go ahead and award those as well, so that would bring that school to a capacity of about 1,000 kids while we're there, trying to utilize taxpayer money as, as long as it could there. We do anticipate that being done by September 30th of next year. Any questions on that while I'm here?
What is the total bid?
The total price? The total price to R.G. Anderson for the bid awarded is $25,447,000 even, for an average square foot price of $257.98, which with everything going on in the market today, was pretty well. So, we will be, we'll come back with two other bids for our furniture for the building within the next couple of weeks to bid that out separate. So, we're happy with that.
So, the 25 million is everything total?
25 million is everything to R.G. Anderson. We'll have two more bids. One bid will go out for furniture, fixture, and equipment, and then another bid will go out for low voltage, everything from, you know, internet drops, cameras, those types of things.
But that's going to build us out for 1,000 students.
That, well, it would be more than, 25 million is to R.G. Anderson. We anticipate an additional 12% to 15% on top of that for that furniture, fixtures, equipment, for the low voltage. So, you're looking at closer to 30 million for 1,000 students.
1,000 students for 25,5, right? That's correct.
That's just for the construction.
Correct.
And you would, you would add closer to 30 for a turnkey price, 30 million. But we'll have that exact number when we come back with that second, second bid. Yes.
Any of the fixtures salvageable from the?
Yes, so that is one reason we're bidding this out separate like that. We have salvaged quite a few cameras, we've salvaged projectors, furniture. We're also, the things we've put in place for our temporary school, we're going to save that money and move that stuff over to the new building that we're utilizing right, right now currently. So, for instance, our fire panel that we had to buy to replace, we'll move that to the new building and put it in, in place. Yes.
How's that price going compared with what the insurance did?
So, to give you a breakdown, because I knew that question was coming. So, we do currently have in our insurance enough to pay for this project without borrowing or anything. Currently today, we have $44 million and some change, I'm using round numbers here, of insurance money left. So, out of that, I'm using rough numbers again, you know, $30 million, that'd leave us about 14 million. And then, we're still paying for things over there right now currently, like our portables we're renting for the next year, that they should be delivered this week. I think we should have two delivered today. So, that would leave us, that does not include FEMA money. We have talked with FEMA, that process can take anywhere from one to three years with them to get the money back. So, even if we supplement Wes Wilson with local, local tax dollars, FEMA would still kick in. We could either reimburse the county, or it would go straight to another elementary or middle school in the future, is how that works, timing wise.
Any other questions?
Okay. Oh, back here, sorry.
Sid. Wes Wilson, local tax dollars, so is that 14 million dollars left to build a new middle school then?
That would, that would be correct without FEMA. Now, FEMA will kick in a large chunk of what it would take, however, they're slower than we would like. So, if we wanted to expedite that process, we can do that with local, local funding or, or funding from our fund balance, those types of things. And then, once FEMA would kick in, whether that be in a year, two years, six months, we would still put that back towards another school, another building project.
We'd be looking at, need another 25 million on top of the 14?
It could be, yes. I mean, rough numbers, but I mean, FEMA could come back quicker than we like. We have a meeting with them in about two or three weeks. We scheduled them about once a month to meet with them and update them.
Commissioner Walker.
Was the insurance claim 54 million or payout?
Very close to that. I don't know the exact number in front of me, but it, I want to say it was like 53,9 or 54,1, somewhere in that, in that range.
And we're at 30 million turnkey for the elementary, so that leaves 24.
Yes, some of that money was spent before I, I got here. Keep in mind, the school system hired NFA. They got a percentage of that. Again, that, that was before my time. I can only tell you what it was spent on.
We know what's been spent already.
Correct, I do. You have 44, there's roughly $9 to $10 million already spent today. already spent today. Now, some of that, keep in mind, some of that was to fix the bus garage over there between the two schools, we also fixed, the football and baseball field are ready to go, there's a field house over there with concession stands and restrooms that were also fixed, they're ready to go as of today, those sports facilities for West Wilson Middle.
Have we already spent the one point three million dollars that was allocated for the sports field over there?
Yes, that's, that's all fixed, yes, so that, the sports facility, the football field, field house, and baseball and softball over there, I think there's two fields, they're ready to go today.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Change gears on you, Mr. Luttrell, we've all received emails, I know from different people around the county, and I just appreciate your leadership and how well you all are handling the controversial issues, and I know that you've talked to my boss probably on a daily basis, and it's not easy, and I don't know if, if everybody in this room realizes what goes on every day, and the amount of phone calls and emails and letters that we receive, and I know you're receiving more than we do, so I appreciate, and hopefully you can keep us out of the, the national news. But I do, and I think that this body needs to realize your leadership and how well you are handling this whole crisis right now.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, but I needed that, and you know that, six o'clock at night, I needed that comment, thank you, and I will expand on that a few, a few more minutes. Any, any more questions concerning the Stoner Creek? Mr. Smith or myself?
Give you a way out.
All right, thank you, just to follow up that, didn't meet, you know, we, we are aware of where we're at, we were starting the process of getting the West Wilson plans and getting that ready to go to bid, so we can get a hard number, and, and part of the issue with FEMA is that we had to get this bid approved before they would even really start looking at what are they going to pay in their percentage and so forth, so we know we're coming back, did have a meeting this past week with Mr. Smith, Aaron, Mayor Hutto, and, and Board Chairman Larry Thomason, you know, in, in the budget that was approved, there were some conversations about assisting our self-insurance plan, and we've all come to a consensus that, and I think I'm right, Aaron, that money would be coming out of what would be a, a building fund, or it could be used for building fund, we're, we're not going to ask you for that at this time, we, our, our priority is to get these schools back, and so we're not going to try to take money out of there for our insurance fund, we're, we're going to continue to work on that, and so we, we want that conversation over, and, and that money to be focused on getting this West Wilson project. I will be back when we have, when we bid that, of course, and we'll have to have conversations between us and the board and, and you as this body for funding that, but we are getting started, I do just want to mention, we've been negotiating some of the, you know, the, some of these, there were plans that were put in place, and we've been before these plans, and, and I don't know exactly how that took place, but we have been negotiating with our architect and design team, and they have met us, and we feel comfortable what they have done for us to not charge us at, at the rate they would, because they'd already had some plans and received payment, and, and they're working with us very well on that matter. Also, on that same note, be prepared, just as soon as we can get it ready, we're, we're working on it to RFP for land, looking at hotspots around the county, we know, and I'm going to give you some numbers here in a minute that will explain that more, so in October, we hope to have it ready for October to be able to put out for RFP for a couple more projects that we would like to see and think we need for, for the growth and to handle the growth, and we'll keep you apprised of, of that as we go through that. Our enrollment, as of Friday, August thirteenth, our pre-K through twelves, nineteen thousand seven hundred and two students, and I will tell you, that went up today a little bit about fifteen students, you know, last month I told you that would settle, it's not settling, it, it just continues to rise, I really thought nineteen-two might catch us, but I underestimated that, and our enrollment is continuing to, to go up every day, and we expect that about the first ten days, and that does, that number's a cleaner number, it does not include our no-shows, will be taken off, and people that have, have, that are on our roll, we've already received some records requests, so we feel very, very comfortable that we're going to be well over nineteen thousand, and to my knowledge, I'm assuming this is probably the largest enrollment in Wilson County schools history, to put it into perspective, that's over eleven hundred and eight students more than we had on day seven of twenty twenty, that is eleven hundred and seventy-seven students more from where we ended the year of, of twenty twenty-one, so, and, and these are really, we, we feel comfortable that we can say our enrollment is going to be way up. On the, the testing, and this was embargoed, and I don't have a clean, we'll get you more, but everybody wants to know how we did, the last eighteen months, two years, has been extremely difficult in the education business, in my career, I've never experienced anything like it, and we're still there today, but as we were expecting, we knew there would be some learning loss, and we did show a decline in percentage of students that are scoring on track and, and mastered on the most recent state assessments, but we're very pleased with our outcomes, considering the obstacles of this district has faced with COVID, trying to teach remotely, distance learning, all, all the plans we had in place along with the tornado, it was a challenging year, but our teachers, our staff, and our administrators, and that's the ones that have done it, have, they've worked tirelessly, and we're a week and a half in, and they're tired again today, but the, I cannot express how hard they've worked, has it been perfect? No, and, and some of our data shows that, but we tried, and, and to ensure that all of our students received instruction and support, and we've learned a lot from that, and I think if, if faced with this going forward, we'll be even better. The good news is Wilson County continues to surpass the state average in all grade bands in each content area, and that's a testament to our students, comparatively speaking, we are fine. You hear a lot in the media about learning loss, I'm just going to briefly give you some numbers to, to show you what that means for us, students in grades three through five had minimal learning loss in, in English Language Arts, we had a decrease of point nine percent compared to the state at four point one. Math was impacted the most, of course, that in-person instruction and practice and, and hands-on, students in grades three through five in our math showed a decrease in four point eight, but when we look at the state decrease, it was thirteen point two, so a lot of positives for our instructors, our teachers, our administrators, and our parents, they don't need to be, they had a, a new role in education, and, and though there was frustration, I'm a parent, I had frustrations, but to see some of this data come back, we feel very, very comfortable that, that what we did was, was sound and, and with room for improvement, but we got good results. And I will give you more, we'll clean this up, and I really want, and looking forward to letting you see comparatively how we stack up. Just, just some other notes, our school lunches, USDA has extended free meals for all of our students through June twenty twenty-two, and that's, that's important. Included in your packet tonight, you have some, some flyers that shows example of additional programs that families may benefit in qualifying for free and reduced, and, and we are, want our families to still apply, even though their, their meals are free, because that qualifies us for more money when it comes down based on those people applying, so we are pushing that. We're getting ready and working on our tutoring program, I mentioned that last month, we will be paying our tutors thirty dollars an hour to, to tutor, and, and high school tutoring, tutoring will also be offered, but, but it'll be a little bit different, and it will be sooner than January, we will start our K-eight program in January, working with the state, and we will, we're going to try to fill these positions with our teachers and EAs, but at that point, if we can't get enough, because there's some restrictions on number of students, we'll be even reaching out further and using that money for that way. You have a lot of information, just some tidbits that I wanted you to have to, to show you what's going on in, in our school system, but the big news was the bid also included, and, and I want to speak on, on the COVID, and, and Mr. Kurtz knows, because he's in the same business, it's been extremely difficult, and I, I will say it was more difficult this year than last year, just from, from the communications and, and some of the things that's been going on. I've included our protocols in, in your packet, that, that what we're doing, and we're revamping them all the time, one thing I've learned in this situation, right now from our standpoint, it, it's hard to get a win, you, you'll make one move, it is appreciated and same time criticized, and I, again, our administrators, I do want to mention what they're doing, and our teachers, and our school nurses, it's unbelievable, the, the amount of volume that, that they're dealing with, and we appreciate that. We have been in contact with LSSD and Mr. Benson, we met, called for a meeting with our local health department, we have a new local health department director, and we met last week, we're going to meet again this week, and we're going to continue those meetings to try to make decisions that, that can help our community get through this, and rely on their expertise, and that, that's where we're at, we've got a meeting again scheduled here for the end of the week, just to touch base and, and talk about some of the issues. Our protocols, we, we are trying to do everything we can as far as making sure we implement them, and, and we're still having to go back and, and revamp them, we're just ten days into school, and we will continue, it's just our hope that, that some way we see these numbers take a turn, that, that's what I, I look every morning, every middle of the day, every evening, wanting to see that number take this turn, and, and that, that will be a, a great day. Any questions for me this time over this report?
Move the report be received and filed.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Report from Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
Ag Center, May, July twenty-seventh, also met August the fifth. Received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? CNN all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe.
Animal Control met on regular session Thursday, our, August the fifth, five o'clock, we did have a quorum, minutes are in your packet, a move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Audit, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
Cable Tax, Commissioner Walker.
Yes, Cable Back Tax met in the upstairs conference room, the minutes were emailed out, the current updated minutes, a move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? CNN all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Developing Tourism, Commissioner Vanada.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton.
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Land and Zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
Land and Zoning met on three August, six P.M., minutes in your packet, move they be received and filed.
Okay. Any discussion? CNN all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Rules, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban Type Facility Board, November sixth, minutes within your packet, move they be received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? CNN all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Finance Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
Finance report was on your desk tonight, including the, the fund balances, those are what we believe to be the actual fund balances now, those are not estimates, you will be seeing the updates in ClearGov as we go, I've had some request for a workshop on ClearGov, and before I do that, Mr. Aaron, the other Aaron, when I say Aaron, I'm not always talking to myself, only half the time, just real quick, we kind of did this last month, but under County Commission, from the county website, you click on the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, I apologize, the way this works, there's a transmittal letter, and it's a letter that goes through some highlights of the budget, but down here at the bottom under that attachment, original budget, that basically is what some of you have in book form, so if you didn't get it in book form and you still want to refer to it, it's all, it's all here, you can toggle it around the right way, so right there you're looking at, at the general fund, at the Circuit Court, Circuit Court Clerk's office, so you have it in the old book form that way if you want it, there on the website, if you don't want it that way, and I hope you don't, then you go to fund summaries, now, anything under the general fund, unless it's revenues, if you're looking for revenues under the general fund, I suggest you go to general fund, otherwise, if you want to know what's going on at the Highway Department, I suggest you click on Highway Public Works, you'll get a lot of nice charts and graphs, it'll tell you that basically forty percent of the money comes from the state, fifty-nine percent is local taxes, and point two percent is other, you'll have all your revenues listed right there, expense types, you spend thirty-five percent on personal services, you spend twenty-one point seven percent on supplies and materials, fifteen percent on employee benefits, and so on and so forth, I won't read it all to you, the fiscal year twenty-two budgeted out at the far right, that is your, that is your current year budget, I'm still working with ClearGov on some of the stuff in the middle, but any department you want to know anything about, and if you go over to departments, and these are primarily going to be the departments in the general fund, so if we choose finance, okay, so there's the finance department, you get a mission statement, you get all the stuff that goes along with it, there's our historical trend of what we've done versus budget, there's what our money is spent on graphically, and there is the budget in terms of what it was, well, the, the fiscal year twenty-one estimated, which those numbers are not up to date, that's one of the things I'm still working on, and then your twenty-two budget, for any department in the general fund, you'll find your expenditures, et cetera, there, anything that you would like to see that you don't see, if you get a chance to look at it, if you will let me know, I will see if there's a way to incorporate it and get it in there, but this will be a living document very shortly, it seems to happen very often, we had a, a point of contact with ClearGov, a wonderful lady by the name of Jessica Mapoza, she left, so for a little while we've been between, we now have a, we now have somebody else, and we're learning, they're learning us and we're learning them, but we're, we're getting back to where we, where we were, so this is, this is going to be taken off again here real quick, so, yes, sir?
Is the twenty-two budget the actual numbers now, correct?
Yes, it is, it is the actual numbers now.
Okay, and if it changes, that will depict that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, yeah, and it will show, pretty soon it will show you twenty-two to date, so you will see a twenty-two, actual expenditures to date for twenty-two, and then the twenty-two budget, you know, the question is, how much is information overkill, so we want to give enough information without giving you so much information that you just basically shut down as soon as you open it.
You say you're going to show us the budget, how much has been spent?
Yes, it's going to show you in the byline item, how much of the salary money has already been spent, the office supplies, other contracted services.
Thank you.
It'll show all of that, yes, sir, it's really not, you can't mess it up, okay? That's what I'm getting at, I know sometimes when, when somebody hands us something on a computer, we get a little scared, because I, you know, I hit the wrong button, something, this is read-only, guys, you can't mess it up, you can go in there and do whatever you want to with it, it's fine, and we continue to work on it, that's really all we have, only I want to say, I very much appreciate Mr. Luttrell and, and Michael, having the mayor and I overend Larry Thomason, I thought it was a, an excellent visit, and probably one that in my tenure, probably one that we haven't had often enough, so it was nice to sit around the table and talk to one another, and I really think the world of everybody that was, that was there, so that really concludes my report, unless you have anything else for me.
Motion to reapprove.
Second. Any discussion? CNN all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met regular session Thursday, August the fifth. Budget Committee met regular session Thursday, August the 5th. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? CNN all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, sir, ready to go.
Resolution 21-8-3, reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions to make additional appropriations of one-time expenditures in Sheriff's Department.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Dow? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-8-4, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make additional appropriations to probation services.
Motion second, any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Gentry? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-8-5, amend the budget and appropriations resolutions to make an appropriation from General Fund to PEG channel.
Motion.
Aye.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. McFarland? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-8-6, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions by approving the Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment 2022-01.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, anybody? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Patton? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-8-7, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment 2022-02.
Motion.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-8-8, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment for summer camps.
Motion.
Second.
The second, any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
And Resolution 21-8-9, approving the attached amendment of the Intergovernmental Sewer Service Agreement.
Hear motion?
Motion.
Second? Any discussion? Commissioner Walker?
Can you briefly explain what this is?
There is, there was an agreement made 20 some, 20 years ago between Lebanon and the county about running the sewer to the Speedway. And the SFUs that are used off of that that work through the sanitation sewer agreement, which, or sewer committee, which Commissioner Robinson chairs. And it's just time for renewal, 20-year renewal. It's been reviewed by the Road Commission and approved.
There it is.
Any other questions? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Gentry? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 5 and 0. Is there any old business to come before this body? Any new business? One more motion?
Motion adjourned.
We are adjourned.